You're alive.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newington Town Council regular meeting of Tuesday, September 12th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to, before we proceed, just pause and ask that everyone join us in a moment of silence. This evening, we would like to recognize Officer Bobby Garten, who lost his life, a Hartford Police Officer, also a resident of Newington, as well as remembering the tragedies of 9/11. Thank you. We'll proceed now with our agenda. The first item is will call.
Here.
Here.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Nagel.
Here.
Counselor Page.
Here.
Counselor Rada.
Here.
Mayor Delbino.
Here.
Thank you, Susan. Next item this evening is approval of agenda.
I'd move approval of agenda as published.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Manki, seconded by Counselor Page. Any discussion, councilors? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Next item this evening is, excuse me, awards and proclamations. This evening, we have two. The first is honoring the retirement of our Assistant Town Manager, John Di Maria. Say it again.
Engineer.
What did I say? Oh, my goodness, Town Engineer. I apologize.
Oh, that was a short question.
I didn't say his name.
No, he said Assistant.
Assistant.
So sorry. Been a long day. I probably.
You got a cookie.
Bye.
So, we are here to honor our Assistant Town Engineer's retirement. I would go ahead and read the proclamation into the record and get us started. Proclamation, whereas we take pride and pleasure in joining family members and friends, along with members of the community, in congratulating John Di Maria on his deserved retirement after 11 years of service to the town of Newington. And whereas, John Di Maria was hired as an engineering technologist for the town of Newington in May of 2012. And whereas, John Di Maria is highly skilled in civil engineering and land surveying with decades of experience with surveying, inspection, design, and construction. And whereas, John Di Maria's experience and technical skills and attention to detail have been an asset to the town of Newington. And whereas, in May of 2021, John's exemplary skills were recognized such that he was promoted to the Assistant Town Engineer for the town of Newington. And whereas, John Di Maria provided his technical expertise to survey, design, and construct improvements to the parking areas of the Senior and Disabled Center, John Wallace and Martin Kellogg Middle Schools, John Patterson and Anna Reynolds Elementary Schools, and Newington High School. And whereas, John Di Maria provided his technical expertise to survey, design, and construct improvements to the parking areas of the Highway Garage, Firehouse Number One and Number Four. And whereas, John Di Maria provided his technical expertise to survey, design, and construct improvements to the Robins, Maple Hill, Lawton Avenue, Forest Drive, Atwood Street, and Alumni Road Projects, and the Chapel at West Meadow Cemetery. And whereas, John Di Maria provided his technical expertise to other municipal projects, investigation of citizen complaints, management of the Call Before You Dig Response System for Town Utilities. And now therefore, be it resolved, that the Newington Town Council hereby recognizes and extends its sincere appreciation to John Di Maria for his professional service and dedication to the town, and wishes him the best in his retirement, dated in Newington, Connecticut, this 12th day of September 2023, signed by Beth Delbino, Mayor, on behalf of the Town Council. Second, seconded by Counselor Rada. I'll entertain discussion on the proclamation. Deputy Mayor Padreco.
Yes, Mr. Di Maria. 11 years of service as the Assistant Town Engineer for the town of Newington, certainly through his experience and the proclamations in the proclamation, he's been instrumental in hundreds of land projects and infrastructure projects, which impacted and improved sites in many neighborhoods and also for our town facilities. So, I just want to thank him for his service and wish him well in his future endeavors.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Manki.
I would just always like to thank John for his service to the town and wish him well in his retirement.
Thank you. Counselor Page.
Also, thanks, Mayor. Just want to say to Mr. Di Maria, thank you very much for your service to our town. We appreciate everything you've done and all the best.
I would just add my sincere thanks and congratulations on your retirement, Mr. Di Maria. And it's obvious through the proclamation, the projects that you touched in your years here will certainly live on in Newington for many years to come. So, thank you for your dedication and service to the town. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I know he is not with us this evening, so I will hand this over and we will make sure that he is presented with us at a later time. We'll start our next one for Mr. Huggard, who is in our audience this evening. And just so you know what to expect, we'll go ahead and do kind of what we just did now, and then we'll have you come up to accept it at the end, okay? And we'll gladly let you make some comments if you'd like to at the end.
Try to stop.
All right. Proclamation, whereas we take pride and pleasure. I'm sorry, I'm reading the same word over again. I'm like, wait, that's the same. Hold on. All right. Let's start. Whereas, we take pride and pleasure in joining family members and friends, along with members of the community, in congratulating Richard Rick Huggard on his deserved retirement after 16 years of service to the town of Newington. And whereas, Rick Huggard has been an exemplary employee for the Newington Human Services Department for 16 years, providing the department with team-building experiences and much-needed humor. And whereas, Rick Huggard has amazing skills in creating, developing, and implementing positive youth development and adventure-based programs, ensuring safety and fun for all participants. And whereas, Rick Huggard has a special ability to connect with youth by gaining their trust and steering them toward positive choices. And whereas, Rick Huggard has offered numerous programs in collaboration with Newington schools, including ALPs, a program for all 5th grade students as part of their health curriculum, enrichment experiences with the high school vocational prep class, groups with 7th grade students, transitional days with both 4th grade students and 8th grade students, high school adventure club, community service, and adventure-based trips. And whereas, Rick Huggard has served on the Newington Youth Adult Council for 16 years, coordinating the annual Hoopla fundraising event that contributes to high school scholarships and offering information, guidance, and expertise. And whereas, Rick Huggard has served in various capacities with the Connecticut Youth Services Association, both as a board member, I'm sorry, both as a member, a presenter of workshops, and the 2013 CYSA Youth Services Employee of the Year Award recipient. And now therefore, be it resolved, that the Newington Town Council hereby recognizes and extends its sincere appreciation to Rick Huggard for his professional service and dedication to the town, and wishes him the best in his retirement, dated in Newington, Connecticut, this 12th day of September 2023, signed, Beth Delbino, Mayor, on behalf of the council, seconded by Counselor Nagel. And councilors, I'll open it up for discussion. Deputy Mayor Padreco.
Yes, Mr. Huggard, 16 years of service, you know, dealing with the youth in the town and families is quite an accomplishment. And I think this proclamation itself reflects your knowledge and your commitment to, and your ability to communicate with youth and their families in the town of Newington. And I'm assuming that later on, we're going to be discussing a job description, that I think, from what I've heard, from what I've seen, you helped really create. You've taken this position and made it into something really important and really strong with the responsibilities and programs you've managed. And you've really helped, I believe, shaped youth development and adventure-based programs here in the town of Newington. And it's going to be quite a loss for the town, but you have made an impact. And I want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Page.
Thank you. Yeah, you're a legend, Mr. Huggard. Really, you, you, you're a legend, and you've affected in such a positive way so many kids and families throughout town for years to come because of your work. Thank you very much for everything you've done.
Thank you. Counselor Manki.
Yeah, Rick, this is a bittersweet moment for me. I've, I've served on many long nights working on Hoopla, trying to eke out a couple of bucks on a, on a pizza sale or a bag of chips. Every time someone retires from, from the town, we lose, we lose experience, we lose knowledge, we lose the, the connections they have, but this, especially so with you, because you have so many connections in, in the youth in this town. It's going to be hard, hard shoes to fill, and certainly I'm going to miss you on, on the youth at all council table. I got to sat next to you yesterday for, for like the 133rd time. And I appreciate all your, your, your hard work on, on that council. I think the good news is, even in your retirement, you're, you're never going to know the number of, of youth that you affected. Because even if it was a glancing blow, sort of, as you walked by and said something kind to somebody who needed help, that sticks with, with youth. And, and you will never know all the youth in, in Newington that you affected and you, you helped mold. And I appreciate all your efforts on our behalf. And as I said, it's kind of bittersweet to say, you know, say, say goodbye. I'm going to miss you terribly. Not that I don't like Carol, but I'm going to miss, I'm going to miss your humor and, and your, your always optimism. We can always get this done when I'm sitting at, this will never work. And you always have that optimism. So, I appreciate your efforts on our behalf.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Donahue.
Yeah, Rick, I actually want to congratulate you twice. Congratulations for being in Newington for 16 years, and congratulations for putting up with the youth of Newington for 16. I, I have a couple, I had a couple of youths that were teenagers, and I can tell you, there, there are handfuls. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Rick, I just want to add my sincere thanks to you. I know many years ago now, I hate to say how many, my kids did take part in some of the programs. And it wasn't always easy to get my kids to do those kind of programs, but they always wanted to go back to ones that you were working on. So, I do appreciate that. And it was very easy to see how you connected with some of our more difficult kids, too, some of mine included. So, I really do appreciate the work you've done. It's, it's clear to hear just in the proclamation and in the comments, the difference that you've made in your years here. So, thank you very much. And I see Carol sitting next to you shaking her head, too. So, very well-deserved retirement, but we will miss you here in Newington. I'm going to come around and, I can, but let's do a vote first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I would, I'll let you speak first, if you want to.
Thank you very much.
We're going to go over here and grab that mic, though, because, you know, everybody's going to want to.
Are you sure? Because I'm a facilitator? So, I can actually.
It takes the pressure off me. All right. And I'd like to offer anyone else an opportunity, I know, especially because your purpose is wants to speak on the proclamation and the public, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Yeah. There you go.
All right. This is a, oh, we got it? Okay. That's so soft. That's great. I normally talk much louder than this, because I do deal with teenagers. You know, on, on one camping trip, this was probably going back about 11 years ago, we ended up going out to Kent and camping with the kids on a portion of the Appalachian Trail that was right along the, the Housatonic River. It was a hot and very muggy couple of days in August. And that night, we had a young man who had gotten dehydrated. And so, we needed to get him out to meet his parents, get over to the Yukon Medical Center. And I took two of our high school mentors with us. And on the way out, this young man, who was very sick to his stomach and very woozy, we, we got into the van, and one of the mentors said to me, you know, sometimes you have a very scary voice, but we always know that you have a very gentle side. And I laughed, because I thought, I'd never thought of myself as having a scary side. But I guess I've always had the beard and I've always had the big body. So, I guess I, I look kind of scary. I'm, I'm a gentle, I like to call myself a gentle bear. I have loved working in this town. I worked in many municipalities over the years in the Hartford County area. I tell everyone, I love Newington. If we had to move and raise our kids up in another town, I would have come here. I love the school system. I love the parents. We have received so much support. And I will tell you that quite a few of the communities around us struggle to have the same kind of support in their youth programming and their youth, all the designs and positive youth development. So, thank you for this. And I'll be around. I still can't get away from working with kids. I know I'll be helping around with some of the youth programs for a while until we get a good person in here. She can't bear to have me go.
Thank you. Congratulations again. Any member of the public that would like to weigh in? Any member of the public wants to weigh in on the proclamations, I'd be happy to indulge that at this point. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. I'm going to put this back. Next item this evening, we have a presentation from MDC regarding the Sewer Easement Vegetation Management Project. And I know we have several members, if you'd like to come up.
Have copies from the council, would you like a copy?
Oh, I think we have them. Is it the same as?
That's it.
All right, we're good then. Thank you.
Does this flip if I, just arrows left, right, you should be all set. It's already set.
Knowledge also that we have two of our commission members in the audience with us, Mr. Payne and Mr. Patel are here, as well, from, that represent MDC.
Thank you, Mayor. Is this, this is really quiet. My name's Jason Wannover. I am the Assistant Manager of Engineering at the Metropolitan District. As you said, with me, with us today, we have Commissioners Patel and Commissioner Payne. I also have our project manager, Tom Robbins, and our construction manager, Darren Gibson. So, the whole purpose of this conversation, I'll be, I'll try to be as brief as I, as I can. I know, I was told that there's cookies or whatever if I finish early. And by the way, if I can retire with a good amount of humor in my proclamation at the end, I consider it a really good career. I like that. But the whole purpose of this is just to introduce counsel and the mayor of the project and program we have going on now. And now that we're going to step into Newington, just so you and your constituents can be informed of what we have coming and what our game plan is and why we're doing this project. Brief agenda, we're going, I'll give you background on what the collection system is for the sewers in Newington, why we're doing this, this program, and what the scope of the program is. So, the Newington Sanitaris Sewer System is about 130 miles, roughly 34 miles of that is actually outside of the public right of way. So, that means it's outside of the road. It could be in someone's backyard. It could be through a park. It could be just off the road in a wooded area along a brook, but it's outside the public right of way. Those are considered easement sewers. I'll go over this more later on, but our typical easement is about 20 feet wide. That's our standard easement. To get to those easement sewers, which I'll get to why we're doing this later on, we have to clear about 10 miles. So, we don't have to clear every single easement in every location. We have to clear enough so we have access to be able to get to those sewers and inspect them and perform the duties we have to perform. The map on the screen shows some green lines. I don't know how clearly it's going to show up in some red lines. Basically, the green is all of our collection system in Newington. Red is the easement sewer that we have to clear to get to. And just some background, Newington is relatively young as a member town. The sewers in these easement areas were put in primarily in the 60s and 70s during a lot of development. Some of our other towns, we do have easement sewers that are much older than that. So, that is one of the reasons why we've gone into some other areas first. As you're probably aware, we signed a consent decree back in 2006 that was with the US EPA. One of the main components of that consent decree was our CMOM program. The primary objective of a CMOM program is EPA's way of making sure that a sewer authority, in this case, the district, properly maintains its collection system, so it does not have any backups or, or releases of sewage from its system. Some ways you do that is through inspections, whether it be through the, looking at the manholes themselves, putting a TV camera into the sewer, or eventually cleaning or lining the sewers. Now, prior to us embarking on the easement program, we didn't, we had inspected roughly 92% of our collection system, because roughly about 8% is in these areas that we could not get to through normal means in the public right of way.
That's Mark.
That's another way of mic drop, I guess. Mark, you're right there?
Yeah, I'm right here, Jason. Thank you.
Voice lift works.
Mark La Boy is actually our clearing contractor. So, if anyone has any questions really detailed to, you know, what the activities include, Mark is on the phone. We start off in Bloomfield. We then went to East Hartford and then Rocky Hill. And we're currently in Windsor. Those first three towns have been completed. We're nearly complete in Windsor. And we're trying to line up basically the next, you know, piece of the puzzle, which in this case is going to be Newington. All in all, we're going to be clearing about 110 miles of sewer easements throughout our eight towns, how it is louder. These are just some typical pictures of before and after. Honestly, we could have shown you any pictures of just trees on the side of the road, and we said, there's a sewer back there, and you wouldn't notice a difference. And that's kind of the part of, part of the story is that most residents don't know that there's a sewer behind their house. So, that's why we're doing this communication. That's why we do the outreach. The, the objective afterwards is a nice corridor that we can get to with our crews and our UTV, which I'll show you a picture of, so that we can access and maintain our sewer system. I did press the button. There you go. The UTV that I reference is not the one on the screen, but it's a picture of a typical one. Years ago, we actually looked at building access roads everywhere. That really wasn't feasible. We then took a different route, which was just clearing the easements and then inspecting them. And the majority of them don't need to be addressed right away, but will need to be addressed in some order of priority. As I said earlier, our typical easement is about 20 feet wide. We're clearing about 12 to 15 feet within that 20 feet. So, we're not clearing the entire width of easement, because we don't need that right now for what we're doing. Our primary objective is just to inspect the collection system, get a condition assessment, and then eventually prioritize it for any future work that we have to do. The UTVs, you know, it's typical, it's like a normal ATV, except UTVs have a roof on them. In this case, we fitted it out with our sewer inspection equipment and software. Now, Mark, when he starts his work, we give him a set, a series of maps. I believe Newington probably has roughly 40 maps, give or take. And we call these map areas. So, everything we do with regards to these, this program in a given town is, is managed by map area. So, this is a typical one. This is actually the Newington Trunk Sewer, which is the primary sewer that runs through the center of Newington. In this case, it's, it's not that far from Town Hall, the, the location on the screen. But you'll see on these map areas, you'll see whether or not we're in wetlands. You'll see whether or not it's in a critical, it's called critical habitat, which is, or NDDB. You'll see whether or not we're in the flood plain. We are in the process of submitting our wetlands permit application to the Town Wetlands Commission, but we did want to come through Town Council first before we actually filed that application. We did file our permit application with the NDDB review through DEEP, and we've gotten that response back already. And that guidance has already been provided to Mark. But this is a, a typical map area, and I'll walk through what Mark does in a second with these. The typical clearance is, the first thing we do is we send a letter out to the property owners and the butters. We include the butters, because in some cases, the property lines, the sewer may not be on that particular parcel, but someone could be in the yard wondering why there's a stranger walking through the woods behind their house. So, that's the, the goal, is to let them know that we're coming. The next step is MDC personnel or our district personnel go ahead and survey and flag the central line of the easement, which is the manholes of the sewers. That gives Mark a guideline as to where he's got to go. Our contractor, our contractor, Mark, then conducts an assessment, which is basically a work plan for each easement area as to what he's got to do, where his access is going to be, what the type of properties are, any stream crossings, unique features like fences, sheds, or whatnot, which we do find. And then quantity of larger trees. And that's primarily because payment for, for the work does change once it gets into the larger trees. And also, more importantly, what he, how long he expects to be there. He then queues his work in a schedule. And then based on that schedule, we may notify the property owners and the butters a second time, because it may have been a while since our survey crew has been out there. That notification is a door hanger, just a reminder. And there's a picture of at the end, the presentation of, you know, hey, we're coming, just kind of thing. And then when, when the clearing work happens, one of the important things is it's all done by hand or hand tools. We don't bring in, it's not like a logging operation. We're not bringing in cranes. We're not bringing in, you know, heavy trucks or equipment. It's primarily hand tools, chainsaws, stump grinders, weed whackers, and machetes. That's basically it. These guys, I'll give props to them. They work rain or shine, almost the entire entirety of the year. And then, once they're done clearing, they'll flush cut the stumps, and that's either done with a grinder or with a chainsaw. Depending on the time of year, the next two steps happen in, in different order. But we then put down a grass seed. It's a, it's a low-growth, low-maintenance grass, because that's, our target is not to be mowing this every other week in, in the future. And then, based on what types of invasive species are in these easements, herbicides is used. And Mark can talk in more detail, but it's, 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 he is a certified herbicide applicator. It is an herbicide that is safe for wetland areas, is, I believe, Mark, if I remember correctly from listening to you, it's a water-based herbicide, if I remember correctly. And then the final slide here is example outreach notifications. So, we have one letter that goes to property owners, one letter goes to the butter, because the words, wording is obviously slightly different. And then there's the door hanger, which is, you know, if we haven't been there in a while and communicated to that property owner in a while, before we set foot on that property to do the actual clearing work, we put that door hanger on the door a couple of days in advance. And I believe that is our last slide. So, with that, if you have any questions.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Padreco.
Yes, I, okay, so basically, this is, you know, getting rid of brush and trees and whatever to be able to access the sewer. So, this doesn't include actually going in with a camera to see if there's any roots growing into the sewer itself.
Correct. That follows this stuff. That's done by district crews. We do notify property owners when we do go do that. That wouldn't be done immediately. There's going to be some level of lag from when our clearing is done to when our crews can get there. They're still working through Windsor. I wouldn't imagine the TV work would actually happen until sometime in 2024. But we do do notifications for that also. And then, not immediately in the near future, but sometime within the next five, 10 years, I would imagine, a lot of this will probably get lined. But that is a separate process. That is a separate permitting application and a whole separate conversation, because that, that is more specific to what type of work we're doing at the time.
I really, I like the fact, there seems to be a good communication plan here with the residents and the butters. I think that's really important, and I thank you for that. And I'm wondering if on our town website, we can kind of keep up with what's going on with the neighborhoods they're in, or where they're going to be.
Absolutely. Because I think that's where people would turn to first, maybe not knowing who's who and what government's what, and certainly who's walking through their backyard, as you said. So, we'll, we'll work with our friends and make sure we get all, all the information out on the website.
Well, when we send our notifications out, which is basically the, you know, the trigger of, hey, we're coming to a certain area, we can let you, Tom, know. So, that way, you know what areas, what maps they're about to go into.
Sounds like a good project. Thank you. Counselor Page.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thank you very much for your presentation. And similar to some of the previous comments, I think that sometimes neighbors understandably get upset when there's stuff being cut down and cleared and trees are coming down. You know, we like our trees. We like, you know, the greenery. And so, I think it's great to have this communication plan and let folks know that this is necessary to maintain this critical, vital service. And yeah, the most, as much communication as we can have, like you're doing tonight, and we can do through our website and other forums will be important. So, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Manki.
Yeah, I appreciate also the care you take.
Yeah, I appreciate also the care you're taking to take care of the environment and, the species that may happen to be there. I appreciate that. I think the goal, the goal here is to, is to clear cut, plant grass seed, and then take the brush and stuff out, I assume.
Yeah, so most of the brush is actually left on the edge of the easement, on the uphill side. If it's, you know, we're not going to leave it in stream channels or whatnot, and we'll also work with the town wetlands agent to see what they prefer, because each town is a little bit different, what we've found as to, you know, what is preferred. But our standard approach is to take the materials and put them on the uphill side of the easement. We do put them into basically habitat brush piles, which is what the DEEP guidelines are. It's good for, you know, the forest animals, basically.
And then the goal is to keep this clear cut, the easement's clear cut?
Yes.
So that you can, in, in, if you're saying if you have to get in there to fix a clog or fix some kind of a leakage or something, you can do that?
Yeah, I mean, it would be good for a variety of reasons. One, you know, if we do have to line the sewer in the future, this work has been done already, but more importantly, if, you know, just for routine inspection, we can get to it much easier. We can find it. One of the hardest things is, you know, if, if we do have an issue in a certain part of the collection system and it hasn't been cleared, just physically finding where that manhole is, is not the easiest thing in the world.
I also someplace heard, maybe from another one of your presentations, that one of the, the, the bad things about sewers is that the, the true roots can get into the, into the pipes. How they do that, I don't know, but they seem to get in. I know a lot of homeowners who have their problem, they, they get into their pipes and, and then make a clog. And so if we have a trunk line that's clogged, that could affect the whole town.
That, that would do it, and that's one of the reasons why we do like to line these easement sewers. One is if you have roots getting in, you also means you also probably have groundwater getting into the sewer too, which is excess water, which then takes up capacity from the pipe itself. So once you do line in the future, then that does prevent both water and roots from getting in.
Counselor Nagel?
Thank you. I appreciate the clear presentation in terms how you, how you are approaching that. I assume there is a plan beyond it to remove the vegetation that the MDC is going to do, because residents will see like piles of things and wondering, when is it going to happen? When is it going to happen? Who's responsible for it? Do you have a plan for that?
It's very site-specific, so obviously, we're not going to leave it in the edge of someone's yard or in the yard, but if it's in a long wooded area, we would generally just leave it into piles on the side of the easement, on the uphill side of that easement. But we'll work with the property owners if a given property owner doesn't want the materials in their, in, because they are the owner, within the right of way, within their property, then we would remove it.
Okay, that's good. Just so the public doesn't get confused, I know a number of years ago, we took advantage of it where homeowners were, were requested, if they wished to, to have MDC come in and use the, the line, the lines to come in to check the homeowners' sewer lines. This is a total separate kind of thing. It doesn't infect homeowners and their lines going to sewers.
That's correct, yeah. This, what you're referring to is either our backwater valve program or a sewer backup prevention program, which, which includes the inspection of the, the pipe from the house to the main. That's completely different, but, you know, obviously, that program still exists, it's still open to any, any resident within one of our member towns, but this is just to get to the mainline sewer itself. And in most cases, these mainline sewers with the easements actually don't have connections to houses, because, in most cases, not all. A lot of times it's...
I felt that it needed to be said publicly again, because some people might misconstrue that this being done next to my property, they're going to want to come into my house without giving me permission or things being complicated.
You're right, we didn't, we don't have to get into anyone's, and, and into anyone's house for this.
Thank you.
Counselor Camillo?
When you were in Windsor, Bloomfield, they've got a lot of open space, and some of these easements are state land, town land. They've got trails. Any way to see if some of this path that you're going to make will connect to trails here for open space? We're starting to talk about things here and down. You do that in West Hartford and Farmington, and it might be something to help the town out at the same time. You're going to clear this area, and we have lots of trails everywhere else.
If it's on public land, we're open to working with the town manager on that. A lot of the easements, from what I'm seeing, basically on my initial review of the maps, are on, in smaller private residential areas. It's probably more similar to what I saw in East Hartford, as far as the sewer layout goes. But if it's within a public, public right of way, it's, you know, that's not, that's an, we can work with the town manager on that, too.
Connect neighborhoods and that kind of stuff, too, with nice paths. So just something to look at, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think we're all set. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. Guys, have a cookie.
All right, next item this evening is public participation. Any member of the public is welcome to come up, and anyone on Zoom is welcome to raise your hand in the participants' window. We do ask that you limit your comments to about three minutes, and we do ask that you state your name and address for the record. Please, window. No hands up online. Anyone in the bill, in the room?
Can you fix the mic on me, please?
Yes.
Send me your question. I'm in the sixties and seventies, I listen to a lot of Hendrix and Floyd. It's a little hard to hear these guys sometimes. Just the mics or add a mic to, to them, so I just feel hard hearing that there. And the reason why I sit back here, because I like to take pictures of some of the stuff that's on the screen, because if it's not on here or something, I take a lot of notes. So I, that's why...
Yeah, I increased the voice lift on it.
I appreciate that.
No problem.
Thank you. Didn't live through the sixties and seventies, so.
Seventies.
Bob Tallard. I'm a registered independent. I'm a conservative, I'm a Christian, I'm a patriot, and I'm a pacifist. Today, I hadn't, I hadn't met with him in quite a while, but I met with, can you hear me okay? I haven't met with him in quite a while, but I met with the chief of police for about 45 minutes today, and we went over quite a few things. And one of the things we discussed was the budget, and we agreed that the budget was not set properly, because he is down nine police officers, and he was not happy about that. And also, the, within three years with A and R construction going up on Culver Street, well, I remember him being here, and he said that he needs nine more police officers right now, right now. He said to me, right to my face, and he predicted that we would need in three years after Culver Street is done, we would need about 65 police officers in the town of Newington. That's his numbers. And we have a problem in the town, and... The building of the town, he, he and I were concerned, and we believe that's, basically, this all started with the TPZ and passing all these zoning regulations and putting all this massive apartments up, and, and the amount of, of the population that's going to come in, and with the tax abatements to all these apartments, and with the, the only tax we're going to get from these people that are going to be moving into the, these 1,000, roughly 1,000 apartments, is going to be the tax on their cars. Not unless they have Mercedes and Jaguars and BMWs or something like that, we're not going to get much tax from any of these people. So it's going to create a problem for the town of Newington as far as the tax base. I predicted the tax base because of you, the Republicans purposely setting it at a low rate and denying the police department, denying police officers that they're due, and there has a massive overtime that they're getting, and he was concerned about burnout, and, and we talked about possible mistakes that could be made through the excessive amount of overtime, because they're short on nine police officers, like I said, and let's see. What happened was, is that through the years, through, and, and I, I get it, everybody, there, there's, they have a union, and what happened was, they reduced it from 20 years of service in the police department, and now, and you get your pension. Then it went to 25, and I understand what the town is trying to do, they're trying to reduce the tax base. The problem is, it's gone beyond ridiculous, because that we need good police officers, and we don't, we don't have enough, and we need to increase their pay, we need to increase an incentive for them to, I know I'm running over, I apologize, we need to increase their, their pay, starting pay, more incentives for them to join the academy. I know it's seven months, and it's grueling, and it's tough, and I couldn't, I couldn't handle it, and, but I'm almost 72, but if I was 25, I don't think I could still handle it, because you have to be smart, too.
Ask you to just wrap up, so it's fair for everyone. Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to come up? Counselors, we did not receive any emails.
We did not.
Okay. Next item is remarks by counselors on public participation. I would like to start. So Mr. Tallard made some comments that I would like to correct for the record. I understand if he met with the chief of police and that his understanding is that we are down nine positions. We do have nine positions that are currently unfilled. We are not down nine positions. The council fully funded the request of Chief Clerk through our budget process. We, we funded every single position that he asked for of this council. We have had a number of meetings in addition to budget meetings to ask him what the needs are. We are planning ahead for when further development takes place, to make sure we are meeting those needs when they come. The problem right now is getting qualified applicants to apply for the jobs that we have open. We have nine positions open. We did not not fund them. They are fully funded, the money is in the budget for those positions. We are hoping to have them filled. We have put incentives in place, and you can help me with this if you'd like, in terms of what the incentives are. We do have a sign-on bonus. We have an incentive for police officers who are already hired by the department, if they are able to bring a certified officer in and recruit for us. I know I'm forgetting one.
We, if an officer comes from another town, a trained officer comes from the town, we provide a, we provide a incentive.
So we have looked at incentives in conjunction with the chief and the department and the union to make sure that we are providing those incentives to try and help with the hiring process. We are typically down of one or two officers at a time, and correct me if I'm wrong, when there are workman's comp issues or injuries that cause people to be out of work, and those are not positions you can fill, that person holds that position. When there are openings in the department, we are continually advertising and trying to fill those positions. Quite frankly, much of this started a few years ago, when some changes were made in the legislation, and folks decided not to go into policing anymore. So we are having trouble with filling positions, but we have been in constant contact with the police department on working on that. And in terms of the funding, I will say this again, the budget was fully funded, the positions are fully funded, there are not nine positions that are not filled because of funding, they are funded, the money is in the budget for those positions. And the town manager, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
No, and, and just in short, Mayor, we will fill the nine positions with the very best people and, and be fully staffed in very short time.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Camillo?
Pass for you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other counselors? All right, we'll continue on to consideration of old business, and the first item this evening is disband inactive committees. And we do have an update in our packets. There were two that are being updated for us. The Town Hall renovation, public building committee held their last meeting in July 2021. Project has been completed with any outstanding issues being addressed through the facilities department. It sounds like we're still working on getting that report finalized.
Yeah, very quick update. I talked to Mr. Harpy just recently, and we're working to schedule the very last meeting so they can put together the final report and then disband. So that should be happening within just a few weeks.
Great, thank you. And then the school code compliance committee, I believe we were still in communication with the Board of Education, their folks kind of manage that one.
Exactly, and they are working through steps. They haven't forgotten it, they're working very diligently through all the steps. The last few steps are making sure that the financial payments are squared away with the state. And even that, if, if that, if that drags on, they'll just disband and move on, knowing that the finances are all squared away. So they, they, they haven't forgotten, they're working very hard on, on final steps.
Continue to keep an eye on that, make sure we're getting that business taken care of. Counselor Mankey?
Yeah, I guess this has become a pet project of mine. I just want to make sure that we understand that we need to, if these committees are no longer active and no longer working, we need to get them disbanded so they're not on, on the books, especially the school code, sco, school code compliance committee, which is, I believe $200,000 sitting in a fund.
Right.
That, once this committee gets disbanded, that money can be put back into other school projects, which are desperately needed, and to have, you know, $200,000 just sitting someplace, it seems silly. So I, I'm not, I'm addressing it to you, but I think, I think as a council, we need to make sure that we get these committees done. We've been in this building now for two years, three years, four years.
I have even more motivation to, to help the staff, the school staff get, finish up.
Thank you. And I'll keep reminding of, of these two committees.
Any other counsel comment or question? All right, carrying none, we'll continue on. Next item this evening is refunds. We're looking for the approval for tonight. Deputy Mayor Padreco?
We saw that property tax refunds, a minimum of $17,887.56 are hereby approved in the individual amounts, and for those named on the request for refund of an overpayment of taxes certified by the revenue collector, a list of which is attached to this resolution.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Nagel. Any discussion, counselors? Carrying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item this evening is approval of minutes. We have two. I would entertain a motion to approve the August 22nd, 2023 public hearing minutes, as well as the August 22nd, 2023 regular meeting minutes.
Moved.
Moved by Counselor Nagel, seconded by Counselor Camillo. Any discussion on those? Carrying none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item this evening under new business is job description for youth worker two. And I will turn this over to Mr. Huttke.
And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Carol Bradkar, Human Services Director, who knows far more about the issue than I ever will.
Come on up, Carol, if you would, yeah.
Come on down.
Okay, do I have to do anything to that?
Nope.
So I think all of you that, that know Rick, who fills the position of youth worker two, recognize that, or can recognize that this position evolved into a much more demanding, high-level, responsible position. And so we are looking to fill ginormous shoes and know that if we're advertising for a youth worker two position, that's going to speak to folks newly out of college, a couple of years of experience, and what we're looking for is someone who can come in with the kind of depth of experience that we've had in our programs. It involves creativity, humor, ability to recognize when youths are having issues that they're not verbalizing, but you can recognize it, and he works then, the position would work then with our clinical coordinator and, and pulling resources. It involves coordinating with most departments throughout the town, police, recreation, library, senior center. He did an amazing program on team building for the department head. So it's, it's really a position that has grown above and beyond a youth worker two, which would just be facilitating of programs. This is developing programs that will interest youth and engage them and, and kind of infuse those positive messages about positive choices and substance use awareness, and, and kind of put that in while folks are having fun. So it involves supervision, hiring of, of staff to facilitate the programs, keeping track of the budget. It's, it's just in no way a level four position, you know, it really needs to be stepped up to meet the actual demand of the job.
Any questions, counselors?
I guess if you just, if you just put a clause in, I could just clone Rick Huggard.
Oh my God, if I could.
I just, for my own edification, are, are there a lot of people that go into this kind of, kind of work?
So there are, but, and, and I know that, so there's kind of a network of folks that do this work through the Connecticut Youth Services Association and so forth, so I'm confident that we will find someone. So I'm confident that we will, um, find someone that has the skill. What Rick brought to the position and what Newington has always been able to offer is the adventure-based piece that many of the youth service programs don't have. So having, looking for that extra, um, certification and safety-mindedness and so forth, um, adds a layer of, um, skills that, that will be challenging to fill.
Yeah, I know you've done a lot of work on the ropes course, very volunteer organizations, and I would hate to see we, we, we don't have someone that could, could carry that on. So I think that's one of the things that, that helps us get youth involved is, is by some high adventure stuff. And then it's easier to talk to somebody when they're, you're doing high adventure stuff about problems than just to just sit down and talk about problems.
Exactly, and they get that, that thrill and that excitement through positive safe measures as opposed to having to get, um, you know, other ways of getting their youth excitement.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Badrico?
Um, yes, I, um, what the bullet was put in regarding, um, the goal of substance of use awareness and positive wellness choices, um, is there any need to mention something about awareness of, of mental health issues or crises? I, I, because I don't see it in the required minimum qualifications either.
Yeah, so, um, the position works hand in hand with our clinical coordinator position. So really what, what happens is this physician doesn't have to have the qualifications in, um, in providing counseling, certainly a mental health awareness and a recognition if a youth is struggling, but not, um, clinical training. That's where that person would work hand in hand with our clinical coordinator, who we've just filled, and she has hit the ground running, Kayla Hendrickson. Um, so it, it's always been a really good partnership.
And, um, I noticed you added, um, a year of senior advisory experience. So that is this, is he going to have, or he or she going to have a staff or?
So, yeah, um, the position hires contractual facilitators. So, and then would that be responsible for supervising that staff, making sure that they have the qual, the qualifications, the skill set necessary to keep the youth engaged, safe, entertained, you know, connected? Um, so yeah, there's, there's definitely that supervision piece.
Okay. Counselor Page?
Thanks, Mayor. You probably already know this, but, um, there are outdoor education programs around New England that might be a nice potential source of a referral or two of candidates. Uh, so, but again, you may know, I'm just respectfully submitting, you know, because there's some colleges that have outdoor education programs.
Right, Rick was, Rick attended Northwest, that program's no longer in existence, but certainly I'm open because if you are aware of things.
Well, my son went to one of them, and then I'm aware of a couple of others if I can help with my duties.
I would love it, yeah. We, we're going to put the, the, uh, information out to all of our various lists, EYSI, um, and would love that.
And thanks for everything you're doing, by the way, and on top of this, thanks. Thanks.
Oh my God, nobody could fill those shoes. And you know, it's, it's so necessary because some of the work we do is, is very heavy, and so having that balance.
It is.
Is key.
Absolutely. All right, I think we're all set. There's no more questions, so we'll move this to our next agenda for consideration of action.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next item this evening is written oral communications from the town manager. Mr. Hutka?
Um, just to reassure everybody, we're taking preliminary, uh, air on the side of extreme caution, make sure that we're prepared if a hurricane comes anywhere near this town this weekend, so.
Good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anybody's had experience with hurricanes, it ought to be you.
Well, I hate to say it, and all, all apologies, but every time they have the cone, five days in advance, you can pretty much guarantee it will go somewhere that, but not the cone. So right now, we're not in the cone, but that scares me a little.
Keep, keep the Sharpie away.
Yeah.
I'll confirm it.
Yes, please.
Like they say, it's all fun and games till Jim Cantori shows up.
All right, next item this evening is council liaison committee reports. Deputy Mayor Badrico?
Um, yeah, I mean, I hope I'm not putting words in the town manager's mouth, but he was a guest at the Economic Council, which he was, and where he was asked to outline his goals and vision for the town. Do you want to take it there more quickly? I mean, I've got bullet points, we don't want the whole presentation.
No, I, I, real quickly, the highlights, I, I started by saying, look, um, I can talk about some observations and some experiences, but bottom line is, council sets policy direction for this town. And here are some things that I, you know, I'd recommend we work on. Um, but along the lines of, of staying abreast of new trends, there, there are a lot of, and particularly industrial buildings that are frankly just obsolete now. No one's going to fill, you know, a, a building that was built pre-war or just after war because it just doesn't work for modern technology, for modern manufacturing. Um, not, 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 certainly not true for restaurants and things like that. Uh, talked a bit about, um, downtown walkability and infilling a lot of existing space downtown to make it a more cohesive whole. And, and, and even out on the Berlin Turnpike and some of the other commercial areas around town is to, to infill using existing spaces, particularly vacant existing spaces, to make it more unified, um, and, and certainly more, um, profitable for owners and managers. Um, talked about the benefits to good commercial and economic development and residential development, that it protects all of our property values, provides good, uh, labor for, uh, job opportunities for us and our children, and always look for a balance of trade with the outside world, but not to the extent where traffic becomes a problem, where you have people flooding into, uh, to, uh, different, different commercial, um, venues where they may cause more of a problem than they're really worth. But those were in general, I think, in general comments, and they were very, very nice to listen to me ramble on for a bit longer.
Counselor Nagel?
Um, I attended the Senior Disabled, uh, Commission meeting and also recently the Library Board meeting last night, their annual meeting. Uh, first, the Senior Disabled, uh, Commission meeting on September sixth, I believe, Counselor Rada attended via Zoom. Um, uh, it was presented that, uh, the COVID clinic projects in connection with the Health District are proceeding, making seniors aware of the clinics and of mailings related to COVID, uh, also, um, flu programs. Uh, suffered from that, there will be an article about the senior center's student, um, garden program, uh, this summer, which provides, uh, vegetables, uh, for, um, many different sources to help out the community. Uh, it will be in Newington Life. Um, um, there, um, it's going to be an expo, um, uh, in the future in the fall involving, uh, seniors and things that are available for them. Um, the town manager recently visited, uh, the senior center and got a view of everything and every last space that was there to be seen, and they were appreciative for the, the visit. September is National Senior Month, and there's, uh, programs going on, uh, involving that at the senior center, as well as many new programs going on that are available, uh, through their brochure and through, uh, going on the town site. Uh, many additional, uh, worthwhile things happening. In terms of facilities, the solar panel program is, uh, a project is, is just about or has finished, uh, but there is a major program involving windows, which I've talked and we know about for months and months and months. It's finally, uh, supposedly started as of this meeting. Uh, it's a planned thing that will be going over several months without disrupting programs there. Uh, that involves the senior center, the, uh, library, um, meeting was last night. They not only had, uh, a business meeting, they also had their annual meeting. Um, at the annual meeting, they, um, noted and celebrated outstanding staff, staff members, uh, Michelle Royer and Jennifer Hebert. Uh, the librarian, uh, gave an extensive documented, uh, hopefully it will be available on the town site of everything that the library has offered in the last year it has available, uh, many extended programs, uh, beyond just what one typically thinks of the library, both virtual and in-person, uh, extensive outreach programs and collections that people can take advantage of, such things as tools and, um, ukuleles, among other things that are available for the, uh, people to use. Um, and, uh, it was a, it was a very, a very good program. Uh, new officers before, uh, were also, um, elected, uh, and, uh, and, uh, also, uh, there was, uh, they now have a legacy program, uh, where they induct a person each year for having given, uh, legacy, uh, when someone has passed their will, uh, to the library. They posthumously, uh, presented it, uh, in honor of Jan Skrill. Um, so that very, hopefully very quickly gives you an idea of what happened in those two programs. Uh, town manager also visited the library and had an extensive visit there, which they were appreciative of because they're, uh, looking forward, hopefully in some way, to expand their facilities. But that's another topic for another day. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Donahue?
Yeah, I think I reported the last meeting that we attended, the teacher contract negotiation.
Yes.
Uh, it came back today that they have ratified it, uh, so they should be making a presentation to us the next two or three meetings.
Okay. And from the superintendent, I'm sure, I'm trying to get that on the agenda. Um, the union membership voted and ratified. Yes. All right, I don't see anyone else's hands, so we will continue on. Next item this evening is public participation. Any member of the public, either in the room or online, may come up. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you state your name and address for the record. Welcome, Ms. Lyons.
Ms. Lyons, forty-six. Felton Drive, and this may be a little bit over the three minutes, and I hope you'll give me the thirty extra seconds. I'm going to take the first, the easiest things first. Um, first of all, the Town Hall Reno, when you disband that, I hope that there's going to be an accounting available for the public as to what was spent, if it was under budget. And I'd also like to know, and I've made this request to Janet Murphy, to find out what value engineering projects were cut from the building of the original plan here, but have since been done with other funds from CIP or wherever else. Also, I would love to see the Ethics Commission meet. I've been waiting for seven years or five years, I think, for that. Six ninety Cedar Street, I see that that's on the, uh, executive session. This is the fourth town manager that has been here that I've seen it on the agenda. I'd like to see it go somewhere other than on our rolls. NCTV, I want to thank you, John, for as much as you can do you're doing. I do hope if there's anyone out there that has any skills that could help you out would volunteer because watching Hollywood Squares at home just doesn't do it for me anymore. And I must say, the mics, the rustling, the talking, it all just kind of comes through. I'd like to see the town planner come here at, once a month or once every couple of months and give an update. I do watch TPZ, but it would be a lot easier. James, I don't know whether there'll be a shredding event this year or not. I hope so. Um, last, well, this isn't last, this is the MDC presentation. I would hope that if there's presentations like this, and this was only for myself, because it's directly affecting me, and if I was noisy in the hallway, I apologize, but the gentleman that were here, or the same gentleman that were here five, six years ago, when I was asking for a terminus at the end of my road, and it was going to be an access road, and everything's changed, I think the public needs to know, and I asked them if they could give a public presentation rather than just come here and give it to you. But if they do give it here, could we possibly have a time to ask questions at the time that they're standing here? All right, I'm going to do this as quick as I can, but, uh, you all know that I've been asking for a, our, our upper monies to be, uh, allocated for the maintenance of South Branch of the Park River, which is Millbrook and Piper Brook, which runs through town. And, um, I'm still advocating for that. But however, tonight, I'm here to put in a request for seniors such as myself that are finding it hard to age in place, stay in our homes, especially with the winter coming up and the heating bills, after watching, I think it was four to six hours off and on of the, um, legislature's energy, uh, or lie hype, lie heap, public hearing, uh, the other day. It doesn't seem to me that there's going to be much money available. And if there is money, it's not even going to fill one tank for not just seniors, but I'm sure that there's other people in town that are suffering after COVID and whatever else is going on with the prices going up, and even with the food. We're, I, I'm sure that Carol can tell you that their food bank, they're constantly asking for food. So if there's any monies that can be allocated for a special fund, for heat, for food, for whatever special needs that the, our human services department may need, I'd appreciate it. It's my understanding, and it's been some discussion, and I'm not sure, but I thought that the monies that we have have to be encumbered by December.
That you wrap up if you're able to.
Yeah, and, and covered by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, and they have to be expended by twelve-thirty-one, twenty-twenty-six. I have heard that department heads are putting in their wish list. I am a resident here, putting in my wish list. Thank you.
Ms. Lyons?
It throws the, all due respect. Um, John, uh, I've been waiting a month for you to, uh, NCTV. I mean, the Republican Party controls the NCTV, and, uh, I know that I'm being discriminated against because you have not got, got a password. And I, Mr. Hutka, I wish you'd get involved in this because they're discriminating against me because I'm registered independent, and they don't like what I say, and I, and, and they're, they're blocking me from being on local TV here in, in Newington. And, uh, I need you to step in because, John, all you need is a password, John. Takes a month to get a password. I, you know, at Cox's table, when I, when I need something done, I call up the producer, he calls somebody, in ten minutes, somebody's there and it's repaired. It takes a month for you to get a password? Now, you're violating my First Amendment rights here. This is disgraceful. You know, why are you doing the job? Why don't you give me the keys and I'll do the job? I'll do a better job. Give me the keys. You resign and give me the keys and I'll do the job.
Mr. Tallard, we're not here to be verbally abused by you. I'm happy to hear your comments.
A month, it takes a month to get a password? I thought you don't respond to people when they're talking. I'm not being abusive. I'm, I'm upset. It's a month.
Personal attacks are not allowed. You are able to say your issue, but personal attacks are not allowed at our table. That's part of our rules.
This is disgraceful. My First Amendments are being viol, I guess you don't, you don't read the Constitution too often. You can't. A month to get a password? Mr. Hutka, I need you to step in and take care of this for me, okay? This is, this is ridiculous.
Rules of procedure do not allow us to respond to you during public participation, Mr. Tallard.
So I, I, I want to get on NCTV and I demand that I get on there immediately, John. A password only takes a phone call away. And one thing I'd like to, uh, say is that on the Ann Reynolds School, Michael, you, you left the room, I timed you, you left the room on, on the vote, you did not vote for it, and I timed you, it was a half an hour that you were outside. I don't know if you're talking to Donald Trump or something, but you're going for a half an hour while the vote was going on, so it was only eight to nothing, so we don't know how you voted. I would like to know when it's time for you to respond, if a yes or no vote on the Ann Reynolds School, because you were not present. I, I, I don't know what the seriousness of the phone call was, but I just thought that you didn't add your, uh, uh, vote later on or make a comment about anything, and you just, oh, vote, it was eight to nothing, and you were gone, you were out the door. I mean, so I'd like a response, yes or no? I think you owe us a response. Mr. Hutka, I need you to step in, okay? Because I'm tired of being discriminated against.
I think you need to listen to the mayor's rules of order for the meeting. You know those rules.
Uh, I am.
Mr. Tallard, your three minutes are up. Thank you for your comments.
Fifty-five more seconds. Are you discriminating against my age?
We'll continue on. The next item on our agenda is remarks by councillors. I would, oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Padreco.
I'd like to just comment on Ms. Lyons' comments on the ARPA funds. And, you know, again, I, I agree that there's an awful lot of needs in, needs, real needs in town by residents, and also needs by our facilities and, and different departments. So I would hope that when we do get the requests, all the ARPA funds from the different areas, that we will keep the word need in mind versus want.
Good, thank you. Counselor Manke.
Just two things. Ms. Lyons, your request for, for the final report, I believe is part of the process of closing out the committee, is a final report. I don't, I don't know what, what manner that takes, but I'm sure that it's a report, and I'm sure that that committee will come before the council and say, this is over, and here's what we've done, here's what we didn't do, here's how much we spent, here's what we didn't spend. And then I'm sure that information will be online, or in a packet or someplace that you can review it. The other thing, I would just remind everybody, Ms. Lyons brought it up, that it's hard to believe now that the heating season is right around the corner, but it is right around the corner. And I know there are a lot of people in town who, who, who are finding it difficult to make those heating bills. You know, the heating oil goes up, and if it's a bad winter, we were kind of got that, kind of got lucky last winter because it wasn't so cold, but if it's a really cold winter, it's going to be difficult. So I would just remind us all that we had, I believe we have for Human Services, a, a fund for fuel oil, and you provide some funds if necessary.
A donation fund.
A donation fund. So people, you know, if, if, you know, if you have a couple of bucks hanging around, you can make the donations now, or maybe try to make a donation every month, or when you're paying your heating bill, if you can remember to just write down the check to Human Services for someone else to help pay their heating bill, that would help. I think that would be a good way to help your neighbors.
Great, too. Counselor Donahue?
I'd like to make a couple of corrections. The Republican Party does not control NCTV. We are, well, you can, you can have your opinion.
Just keep talking, John. John, keep your comments to the table, please. Thank you.
We are a volunteer organization with three volunteers. I did communicate with you two weeks ago, and I'm sorry, totally my fault. All right, I haven't, I haven't been in the studio since I talked.
I didn't make any communication, John. It's not the case.
Just keep telling your.
I will get the information to you. I promise you, by this weekend, I will get the producer form to you. I will have my coat, my scheduling guy look at the, and see what time slots are available. We will give you time slots. I can't guarantee any time slots because I have all shows, but I will communicate to you by this weekend with that information. I'm not discriminating against you, I just haven't been in the office. And it's only three people. When you, when you call Cox, there's somebody who's getting paid to do that. When you call NCTV, we're there two hours a week. So I will endeavor. As a matter of fact, I was just looking at that this morning, and I said, you know what? I didn't get back to Bob. I bet she's going to come to the meeting tonight and challenge him.
All right, thank you. Counselor Page?
Thank you, Mark. I just want to say I appreciate Ms. Lyons' comments about 690 Cedar Street. I know I've made comments at this table in the past. We've had some disagreements about things, and we may continue to have disagreements. I, I haven't been convinced, at least this one person has been convinced, that we've had the best deal for the town. And, and I know economic circumstances change, as some here have pointed out, and we may learn further about that, that will change the path or the, the journey we're on with this property. But I, I'm looking forward to more data to come in to convince me and maybe others that we're, we're doing the best we can to yield the best result for, for residents. I appreciate your comments. Thanks.
You're welcome. Counselor Camilla?
To mention that we're short nine police officers. Some left to go to other towns because they were offered a lot more money just to leave. There's been money set aside over the past few budgets for extra police officers. We couldn't find any. There was a bill that was signed by Gary Turco. He said he wouldn't sign the accountability bill, and that's why we're losing all these I mean, Chris Murphy has said in public, we don't need SROs in school. Who's going to protect our kids? This is coming from the top, from Hartford, from Washington, and it's coming to us, and then we're supposed to deal with it. They make the mess, and we're supposed to clean it up. You've got four projects. You probably have about 700 people coming in to live in the town if they can rent them out. Very high today. Right now, with 46 officers, including the chief, that's 673 people per officer. So we need one more. Somebody's math is off. Wait a minute. No, you've already said what you said. I'm not done yet. I'm not done yet. The last Anne Reynolds meeting, I was here the whole time, the last one. Maybe the one before, I had to leave because I work in my office and I have to take care of a customer at 5:00 because it's the end of the day. It happens. I'm trying to run a business.
Counselor Camilla, continue your comments. You have the floor.
If the project meets the regulations, it gets built. There's nothing we can do about it. We don't make the regulations fit the project. I was on TPZ for years, okay? And then we weren't lucky enough to have projects like that come to us. But in the past four years, we've been very lucky. Some of it is ARPA money. A lot of the other stuff that's happened, mill rates get lowered, our town looks more attractive, property values go up, not down. And there's no way in hell that someone tells me how to vote. Dominic Payne is the chairman of the Republican Party. He doesn't tell me what to do, or anybody else here, just like John Kelly on the Democrat side doesn't tell them what to do. So I resent the fact that you call this puppets, or there's a puppet master. It has to stop.
Okay, we're going to continue on. Thank you. Any other council comment?
I would just like to say one more thing regarding the police funding. I will assure people out there that are listening, and I would encourage you to look back at our, all of our meetings are taped. You're welcome to look back at the record during our budget sessions. Over the last four years, we have asked the chief a number of times whether he needs more staffing or not, what we can do from our perspective to support the police department, and whatever he has brought forward, we have funded. There was a, I think it was a half position this year, I'd have to go back to my notes, but it's in the budget book. Those are public documents. Anybody can look at what was brought forward to the council and what we voted on, to see that we have funded the requests that were brought forward to us for consideration and have always supported the police department in that way. The positions that are unfilled, as I mentioned earlier, are unfilled, budgeted positions. The money is there for them. The department is having trouble filling those positions. And it is a hardship on our officers that are currently in the department that are picking up the slack, and I am tremendously thankful for those officers that are still willing to do that job and are still willing to put in those extra hours and keep coming back to work every day despite the shortages, and are willing to keep our families and our community safe. And I, and this entire council, I have no question, I don't even have to ask, because I know every single one of us, all nine of us, feel the same way about our police department. We've had these discussions. And I'm, I'm looking for nods around the table, but we did not cut any police funding. Correct?
We did not.
Thank you. And that was not a Democrat, that was not a Republican decision, that was a united council decision to do what was right during our budget proceedings. All right, next item this evening, we have two executive sessions. The first one, under Connecticut general statute, 1-206E and 1-210B10, attorney-client privilege. We will entertain that motion first. We will, because there are two separate purposes, and they are governed separately. We will go into the first executive session, come back out, have to read a motion to go into the second one for the second purpose, and then come out for adjournment after that.
You will not be taking any action?
No, there will be no action this evening.
I will put on a shirt on the studio.
So I will entertain the first motion. Counselor Manke?
Resolve new town council courts with Connecticut general statutes, 1-206E and 1-210B10. Hereby moves to go to executive session and invites the town council members, the mayor, Kenneth Plum, special town attorney, and Tom Hudkay, town manager, to discuss an item of client, attorney-client privilege.
Second by counsel, Anis. Any discussion, councilors? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand in executive session at 8:19. Counselors, let's take a five-minute recess before we reconvene.
I'll shut down the studio.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Folks, we're back in public session at 9:47 PM. The next item on our agenda is another executive session regarding real estate, 690 Cedar Street. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Oh, Deputy Mayor Badreko.
Resolve that the Newington Town Council, in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-260D, hereby move to go into executive session and invite the town council members, the mayor, Janet Murphy, Director of Finance, and Tom Hotco, Town Manager, to discuss an item of real estate, 690 Cedar Street.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Counselor Ladd? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes eight zero. Counselor Camillo is out of the room. We stand that executive session at 9:48 PM.
All right, folks, we are back in executive session, uh, public session at 10:26 PM. We have no action to take this evening, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
So moved by Councilor Donahue, seconded by Councilor Camillo. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed unanimously. We stand adjourned at 10:26 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Do you know what this says?
Wait.